And let's see, who can I choose as a victim? Oh, a rule call, thank you, for the reminder, waking up.
Four council members are present and council member Ann Schneider is excused.
Thank you, and maybe we can have former mayor Doris Morris, would you like to lead us in a pledge allegiance? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, thank you Mayor Morris, former mayor. Okay, so we have a few proclamations. And do we have somebody representing the Armenian, Armenians? Okay, great, let's go down. Okay, so the reason why we do these proclamations is just, it's a reminder of history and, and it's really true that if you don't pay attention to history, you're going to repeat history. And we've seen that today in today's politics. So this is a proclamation to Armenian Remembrance Days, a national holiday in Armenia, and is observed by Armenians in dispersed communities around the world. It's celebrated on April 24th in honors the Armenians notably deported from the Ottoman capital in 1915. And there were approximately 1.5 million Armenians who were massacred and sent on death marches between the year of 1915 and 1923. California has one of the largest populations Armenians and they're in many positions of leadership in the field of academics, medicine, business, agriculture, government, arts, and very patriotic American citizens. And so this is kind of sends us an opportunity for us as a community to stand behind Armenian, Armenian friends and others groups that faced similar horrible events, and I hope that we withstand up to those, to that type of events because if you're not standing up, then you're part of the, you're part of the problem. Thank you.
As a Greek-American, very close to my many, many Armenian friends, we do want this recognized each and every year in the importance of it because it has already been repeated. Adolf Hitler once said, "Nobody remembers what the Ottomans did to the Armenians when he went through his genocide." So it's extremely important and the Armenian community within California, as the mayor pointed out, we've even had Governor Dumajian, Armenian descent, is very important to all of us, as are all of our ethnic groups throughout California, it is what makes us strong. So thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and the council for recognizing this.
Thank you. Okay, so the next one is, and we, I see we have a nice contingent here, so if the members of the senior advisory committee members can come up. And I'll just have each one of you introduce yourself if you wouldn't mind.
My name is Marlene McBride, I'm the chair of the senior advisory committee.
Mary Ellen Pellegrini.
Me Me Lin.
Rochelle Mullen.
Ann Jones.
Thank you, and so some of you noticed that there aren't any men on this group, and I think that if they're smart, they will want to be with these pretty ladies. But I guess, yeah, I'm getting up there, maybe after my, after I get off council, I might have an opportunity to. So the, the senior committee does a lot, they put on the senior fairs, they also put out the senior lines, and they've, they put on luncheon, and also three times a week they put in, they, they help sponsor self-help for elderly, to put on luncheons for our seniors, and also provide entertainment and exercise and the opportunity to socialize. And also our, the chair, Marlene McBride, also teaches English, right, so that's fantastic. So we're doing things, they're doing things to integrate our different seniors together, pick them in opportunities to socialize and really just bring their spirits up. So without much ado, today, we, we, the city council has, is signing a proclamation that recognizes Senior Citizens Month, which is now called Older Americans Month, and was started by John F. Kennedy and then re-instituted by Jimmy Carter. And one, Millbrae has this distinction of having one of the largest populations percentage-wise of seniors and elderly, as well as kids, so we have a really good balance. And, and they're current, they're always working hard to provide that, that part of the fabric, I call it the fabric of Millbrae, to make our community really special. So I just want to thank you all, and all the seniors who weren't, who weren't able to be here, and I know everybody pitches in one way or the other. So this is an opportunity, if you're ever looking for an opportunity to volunteer, this is a great group to volunteer with. And so without much ado, I'd just like to, let's get a picture and congratulations.
Mayor and council members and staff and those that are attending, it's a real pleasure to receive this proclamation, and we will definitely have it signed in our rec center, held up high. And you all have our senior line, it's new, June, you got this one for June and July, May and June, and this is available now. Thank you very much for this honor.
Yeah, please, councilwoman Leva.
I just wanted to give a little shout out for the representation for the community center and all the work that this group has done as representing. I know that Marlene and Ann especially have made, like, every single solitary meeting and brought comments back to and from both the senior advisory committee and the advisory committee to the community center rebuild. And it's been, to me, so valuable, and the efforts were immeasurable, so thank you guys very much.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you. So let's moving on to our next ceremonial agenda item, and this is a very special one because this is recognizing a very, a very special couple that has provided a lot of volunteer opportunities for this city and has volunteered for the city for many, many years. And this is a big milestone, so I'd like to ask Les and Doris, former mayor Doris Morris, to come up to the podium, please. And while you're doing that, I'm going to read this. So Les and the honorable mayor Doris Morris were, were married in April 30th, 1954, I guess they got married when they were like 10, must have gotten somebody to sign off. So Les, and then they were married in San Francisco, and they will be celebrating their 65th wedding anniversary. And they moved into Millbrae in 1971. They have one son, Robert, daughter Patricia, grandson Michael, granddaughter Sarah, great-grandson, twins Jamison and Lincoln. And so Doris was our former mayor, as I mentioned, and she was elected in 1987 and served 12 years and three terms as a mayor, so she's caught up to, Gina's caught up to her. And so this is a very, Doris and Les have volunteered their time with the chamber, the library, oversight committee, friends of the library, the Friends of Cities Commission, MTC and the Millbrae Historical Society, so they're very woven into our community. And we'd like to congratulate, on behalf of the city, and the city council has assigned this, and we just want to recognize your 65th anniversary, congratulations.
Thank you very much, that's great. Okay, well, thank you very much, it's so nice to be back in this room, okay, very good, well, thank you so much, we're really happy to have our family around us, we celebrated Easter with our two great-grandsons, three and a half years old, wonderful, whoever thought we'd ever get to that point. Now maybe we can add a few more if Sarah would just get married, anyway. No, no, she's got a great fella, but they gotta, they gotta do it slow. But thank you very much, Mayor, appreciate that. All right, I'm gonna get a picture over here, Les.
You stay there.
You're wondering why I'm half asleep because I just got off the plane from Malta. It's like been a 24-hour thing.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I think it would be important to acknowledge former mayor Morse's, her involvement in building that sister-city relationship with Malta, which, where you just, Mosta Malta, where you just visited this past week.
Yes, yes, thank you, that's, let me also mention the fact that Millbrae, or actually, Millbrae is the only city, sister-city relationship that Malta has signed in the United States. So, and they are not, so they have a procedural rule that they're not, they're not going to allow any other American cities to sister-city with Malta. So we are very unique, and the fact that our sister city is Molsta, and I was told by the council general, Louis Vallad, that 85% of the Maltese that are in the Bay Area are from Molsta. So that makes Millbrae the Maltese central, pretty much, of the Bay Area. So we, it's a very special, it's a very special distinction, and if you ever want to see how special our relationship is, there's a corner, cornerstone here that's, that was given to us by Molsta, and there's also a park named Molsta Park on South Ashton, if you ever walk by, you'll see the park, councilwoman Gina Papin.
And we had our first presidential visit from the president of Malta here in Millbrae, and we are so very, very proud of our Maltese community, which makes us very strong all around.
Yes, and I think Mayor Papin at that time represented us very well.
Now we had Secret Service and Bomb Dogs and everything, it was really cool.
They didn't sniff your purse, or candy.
That's true.
Okay, anything, anybody else? Thank you, thank you very much, Vice Mayor, for, and again, congratulations to Les and former mayor Doris Morris. So as you see on the screen that the police, the sheriffs were very busy giving, giving out, I guess, licenses to these young people, so our chief, chief Conkle would be, please come up and give us a presentation, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable city council. When I interviewed for this job with then Mayor Papin and city manager Williams, it was very clear that one of our priorities was for the police bureau to increase community engagement. And when I was selected for this position, one of my initial goals for our police bureau was to increase community engagement. At the behest of council member Schneider, she recommended a bike rodeo that apparently we used to have, and we took that idea and we really run with it. I have a video for you in just a few minutes, but I'd like to publicly thank the office of the city manager, the recreation department, Department of Public Works, California Highway Patrol, Central County Fire Department, the Millbrae School District, the Millbrae Lions and Leos, and of course, my beloved San Mateo County Sheriff's Office, specifically the School Resource Unit, Community Policing Unit, and the Sheriff's Activities League, who all contributed and been planning to make this a fantastic event. The event will be on May 11th, it's a Saturday, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at Taylor Middle School here in Millbrae. All ages and all skill sets are welcome, we're going to have free food, a bunch of really interesting stuff to look at, we'll be giving away free helmets, we have at present, I think, six bikes to raffle off. So it's going to be a really neat community event, and we'd like to invite everyone in the community to come, join us, it's free, it's a great fun day, come out, give your kids a new, safer skill set of riding a bicycle. And I'd like to play our video that we released on Saturday to public media, it's on our public social media, it's on our website, the sheriff's office, it's on all our social media, and it's on the city website as well. Let me see if I can do this properly. So the two children, the deputy sheriff, the female on the motor off, is the daughter of our press information officer, and the highway patrol guy is the son of the highway patrol press information officer. So they got such realistic-looking uniforms. So we're very excited, please come out, please let your kids know, and you don't have to live in Millbrae if you're in a neighboring jurisdiction, you want to come by, we'd love to have you.
And chief, one of the things is a giveaway of free bike helmets, correct?
Yes, so we'll have, the highway patrol is bringing a number of free bike helmets, a limited number for adults, mostly for children, but not only will they get the bike helmets, they'll get properly fitted so they're wearing them correctly as they're riding around. Any questions?
Any questions?
Awesome, well, hopefully see you on the 11th, thank you.
Great, thank you for your presentation. Okay, so would the city manager go over the agenda, please?
Yes, thank you, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, Tom Williams, city manager. Just two quick items for the briefing this evening, this Saturday, April 27th, the city will host a community-wide event celebration for Arbor Day and Earth Day. We encourage people to consider volunteering or getting a group together to volunteer for the morning event. We will meet at 10:00 a.m. at the end of Taylor Boulevard at the Spur Trail, and it will go to 12:00 noon, so two hours, we'll plant some trees, tend to some of the landscape planting beds, and also, while we're at it, pick up some litter as we see it. For more information, you can contact us at 650-259-2444, or just simply visit the city's website. Also, Millbrae Recreation and the city of Millbrae announced the opening of registration for our Millbrae Adult Sports Program for the summer. We have volleyball and basketball, the summer season will be the, start the second week in June and go through the end of July, and registration is open to any adult 18 and older. The cost per participate is $425 per team, and that's due before the first game. People interested in a team or just joining a team can again look on the city's website under our recreation department for further information. Now moving to tonight's agenda, item number two is calendar of events and report of bills and claims. Item number three, approval of the meeting minutes for the regular meeting of March 26, 2019. There are no oral reports from city committees or commissions. We have public communication, that's any item not on the agenda, anybody from the public can speak. Then moving to the consent calendar, we have one item, item number five, which is to consider adoption of a resolution authorizing the city manager or designee to sign agreements with five on-call environmental consulting firms in a total amount not to exceed 3.5 million for a period of five years to perform studies and associated work involving but not limited to the California Environmental Quality Act. Just to be clear, this is for land development projects, and this will be 100% cost recovery by the applicants that submit for development projects in the city. Moving to public hearings, item number six is a public hearing on the proposed adoption of the Central County Fire District, fiscal year 2019 through 2020, master fee schedule. Item number seven, we are recommending a continuance to the May 28th meeting, that item is to review a design review permit, conditional use permit, parking and height variance, and a lot merger subdivision to allow the demolition of a parking lot and construct a four-story, eight residential unit, one office and two commercial areas in a condominium subdivision on .13 acre site located in the C zoning district at 480 El Camino Real. The reason for the continuance this evening is there are two fees that the permit was not properly conditioned for, and we just need more time to work back with the applicant and calculate the fees correctly. Under existing business, there are no items, under new business, item number eight is to review and consider adoption of the Millbrae Skate Park rules. And with that, Mr. Mayor and council, there are no other items on the agenda this evening. And with that, Mr. Mayor and Council, there are no other items on the agenda this evening.
Any questions? And thank you, City Manager. And do I have a motion for the minutes? Your votes, please.
Item number three passed with a vote of four to zero, with Councilmember Schneider excused.
Thank you. Okay, so, moving on to no oral reports. Public comment, Wyn Girkich.
Hi. My name is Wyn Girkich. I came here tonight to talk about three things. And the first one is this. Tomorrow in Sacramento, I'm urging everybody to call their Assemblymen and Senators to vote no on SB 276 and AB 262. This is about taking away the exemption law for any child to have vaccines. And if you don't know about vaccines, you should look up avoiceforchoice.org, or you should also learn therisk.org and learn what's in these vaccines, because if you did, you would not take one, believe me. There's a lot of things in these vaccines that cause cancer. Polysorbit-80 not only causes cancer, it sterilizes. They've got glycyphate in vaccines. And I'm gonna read you a little bit, this is vaccines by, it says vaccines. Understand the dangers and make better decisions. This is Dr. Russell Blalock. And Dr. Russell Blalock was a brain surgeon, but he writes these newsletters. Now, he's retired. He said, despite the manufacturer's problem of removing mercury from vaccines, the flu vaccine still contains thimerosal. And some of them have ethyl mercury in it, the most toxic form of mercury to the brain. Anything over 200 parts per billion is considered toxic to adults, and yet these vaccines contain 25,000 parts per billion. That's amazing, isn't it? Y'all want a flu shot, huh? So, then they said, this mercury is bad enough for adults, consider giving it to six-month-old baby. That's pretty bad, huh? It says, so, the so-called thimerosal-free vaccines contain 300 parts per million ethyl mercury. And most recently, they found glycyphate in the ingredient in Roundup in vaccines, which is linked to nervous disorders and cancer. So, this glycyphate, here's this lady from her, her name is Dr. Stephanie Schneff from MIT, and she said the toxicity, she found was shocking about the glycyphate because it causes neurodevelopment disease such as autism. So, they put Roundup in your vaccines, and you wonder why these mothers don't want to take these shots. So, please call your legislators about not voting for that to, if somebody wants a childhood exemption, they're gonna do this on force vaccines, starting in 2020 on adults. That's why we have a nationalized ease card. And when you said those who remember the past, or don't, who don't remember the past are condemned to repeat it, check out Kitty Witherman, The Rise of Hitler. One of the other things that I'm here for tonight is, you know, I was here last time talking about Governor signs a law allowing to liquefy dead bodies to go down the drain. This is AB 967. Call your State Assembly and Senator Jerry Hill and ask if they voted for this, because Governor Brown signed the bill and nobody knew. But you're recycling toilet water here. When you recycle toilet water and you pour it into the aquifers and we reuse it, you know, when they said you have the right to choose to do this, but the county, when people are poor, the county will do this to them, and you'll be drinking it. It's also in our food.
So, on to, oh, yes, Councilwoman.
I do think we have to note that there's a national epidemic right now with measles. And...
And the measles shot has the most glycyphate in it. Right here in this article, I put it on public record.
You had your chance to speak. It's Councilwoman Snyder's, I mean, I'm sorry, Pappin.
Thanks.
Sorry, you're sitting in your seat.
It's a serious, serious epidemic here that's happening throughout the country, and so, please, go online, do your homework. But the connection there, supposed to that one, is extremely important, and this is the type of disease that two hours after somebody leaves the room, you can still be exposed. So, to the most vulnerable populations. New York now is passing laws that you cannot enter school without these vaccinations. And contrary to our last speaker, it's so extremely important that you get the measles vaccine and not expose those vulnerable people to that very, very terrible disease. It was under control, and now it's an epidemic. So, thank you.
Thank you. And as a reminder that these people who are speaking, who speak at the public portions of the council meetings doesn't represent the city, but represent their own views. And I encourage you to do your own research, because you don't do your own research, then you're, you're going to be, you're gonna have to live with the consequences.
And to be clear, there has been no direct connection from the measles vaccine to autism. Very clear on that. It is not associated. Thank you.
Thank you. Awad, I'm in. I'm sorry if I butchered your name.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Councilmembers. I'm Nawid Amin, longtime Rec Center fan. And it just occurred to me the other day, I was talking to Red Cross volunteers, and they were talking about doing shelter surveys. And since the Rec Center will be at least a 40, 50-year building, and since it's gonna be a multipurpose building, maybe, since it's in its early design phase, it would be good to kinda incorporate one of its purposes as an emergency shelter. And I think that's good to do it now, rather than, you know, what have you, an emergency occurs 40, 50, you know, after its completion, and then to assess it whether it's appropriate as an emergency shelter. And so, that's, that's one of the thoughts that just occurred to me the other day. And I was like, you know what? That's a, that's a good idea, to do it while it's in the design phase. You know, it's obviously gonna be a multipurpose building, and it's gonna last at least 40, 50, you know, good years, and then, that's it? Okay. Thank you for your time.
How's someone Pappin?
That is part of the design and part of the purpose as we proceed down the design aspects of a future recreation center. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, so, nobody else? All right, so, moving on to consent calendar. Anybody want some motion? Thank you. Votes, please.
Item number five passed with a vote of four to zero, with Councilmember Schneider excused.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to item, excuse me, item six, public hearing to adopt the Central Fire, Central County Fire Department's fiscal year 2019-2020 master fee schedule for fire prevention services.
What happened?
Welcome, Rocky.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Thank you very much for this opportunity. I apologize for my attire. You're used to seeing me in uniform. I just had surgery last Friday. I'm hoping that the, I'm working off of your feelings that maybe I'm hurt, that you'll just go ahead and prove this without an issue. But no, it's not that big of an issue, but I just, we're here to do, Central County Fire Department, on an annual basis, we do update our fees. We go through a whole worksheet where we make sure that our fees are appropriate and are probably being collected for the purposes of capturing our expenses as we do our work. And this year was a little bit unusual as opposed to last year. Last year, we pretty much held at the same fees. We do the worksheet on an annual basis. Last year, we did not come here and do an adoption. It was a year before that we did the adoption, and we updated those fees. Last year, we didn't need to. This year, we did our worksheet, looking at the personnel that we have, changing some of the assignments that we have. In some cases, we were actually able to reduce some fees, which is a good thing. But the main thing is making sure that we can recover our fees, and we do this on an annual basis, making sure that the fees are appropriate. So, what we bring forward to you today are the fees that were adopted by the Central County Fire Department on April 10th by our Fire Board. And now that they've been adopted, because of our contract with the City of Millbrae, we're here today to include our fees into the Millbrae master fee schedule.
Mr. Mayor? Councilwoman Pappin?
Thank you for being here. We greatly appreciate that. Does staff understand how this will impact the current fire assessment, our current overall fees, the projects that are proposed? Yes?
Mr. Chair, would you please open up the public hearing?
I hereby declare a public hearing open.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I was hoping the staff report would be on, but I wanna capture your comments on the public hearing.
Public hearing open. Thank you. How is this going to impact, we as a public, who are in our second, if not third, gyration of the fire assessment? And also, we are looking at an increased population with these big developments that are happening in Millbrae, and also in Burlingame as well. Major buildings are going up. So, as a matter of public safety, we appreciate all the efforts that are being done here. Will we be able to cover the costs and how so? Please.
Well, our Finance Director has stepped up, but for the assessment, for the most part, these fees deal directly with services that are charged. So, this does not apply directly to the assessment. But for the most part, in regards to the expansion of new construction, that's why we do these worksheets. For example, we have a 12% fee in there that are assigned to building permits. Our 12%, how we come to that number is we look at new construction and we see how much time, on average, that we spend on each building, and we total up that time, and then we come up with an average, and that's how we do that every year, to make sure that we're right sizing based upon the type of construction and the construction field, how it moves forward, and our responsibilities in inspection, that we can recover those fees. So, that, our adjustment or our fee adoption would address that and would include any increases or ensure that as new construction moves forward, that we are appropriately recovering our fees. Do you want to address anything regarding the assessment? Anything further?
So, the, the fire suppression assessment is unrelated to the fees. It covers a portion of the cost of fire service. I think it's about one and a half million dollars collected against a cost of over $6 million for fire services. To the extent that these fees are collected, they do offset the cost of fire services. So, if we weren't collecting these fees, the cost of services would be higher. So, in any case, that you can identify the actual user of a service, you want to charge them appropriately for the service. We cannot charge more than a service cost, neither can the Fire Department. So, the purpose of keeping these fees up to date assures that we are properly allocating those, those costs.
Councilwoman Aliba.
So, I understood everything on the fees, 'cause they're all, it's pretty self-explanatory, except for the last page. I'm just curious of, like, Christmas tree lot. What is, what does that mean?
So, those are...
Not just that, but that whole little page, little...
Sure. In the fire code, that's adopted by the City of Millbrae, there is a section 105 that requires that we charge for fire permits. And I guess the best example on that, that we see most frequent here, are tent permits. So, when the Recreation Department puts, offers up some city property, and somebody comes on board and they want to, a private entity wants to erect a tent, there is a history with tents in the United States of injury, illness, or burning, or life safety issues. So, the fire code covers that, and we would recover our costs when we issue a tent permit.
So, the permit fee?
Yes.
On that particular event that's going on?
Yes.
There goes Cirque du Soleil in Millbrae.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
A quick question?
Okay.
So, the fire service, having reviewed recently the incident in Millbrae with the Sheriff's Department, what's the connection between fire and the ambulance services? Because I was extremely disturbed to see that the ambulance service that showed up did not have an electro, is it electrocardiogram? Defibrillator, excuse me, a defibrillator, which we have in our schools and our city buildings, and to think that the ambulance service does not have that is disturbing.
I don't actually think every ambulance, every first response ambulance, any fire engine in the county is required to have that equipment. So, I don't know, maybe Chief Conklin would know about that, but I know that the ambulance, every 911 ambulance and fire engine in the county has a defibrillator.
Okay, we'll stop there, since it's open litigation. Thank you very much.
And just for clarification and to inform the public, these are the same fees charged to Burlingame and Hillsborough for whatever construction goes on there.
That is correct. They are consistent throughout all three jurisdictions.
Okay. Yeah, well, you know, the cost recovery is an important aspect of fire prevention and paying for these services. And I do appreciate that in some cases, they were able to be reduced when appropriate or increased when appropriate. So, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Let's have, let's have some, any comments from the public? None? Do we want to close public hearing? A motion to close public hearing? Your votes, please.
The motion to close the public hearing passed with a vote of four to zero, with Councilmember Schneider excused.
Okay, any other discussion from the council? Okay, can I have your, clear the board and have a vote, please? Faster. Thank you. Your votes, please. Oh. What's that? Oh, okay. This is, this is a motion to, actually, whoever's made the motion is supposed to read. Prove what? Oh, turn on your mic, please.
I'm gonna say it again.
Please?
Yes.
Thank you.
The adoption of Central Fire Department fiscal year 2019-2020 master fee schedule for fire prevention services.
Thank you.
Item number six passed with a vote of four to zero, with Councilmember Schneider excused.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you. Thank you to our Fire Department. They're, like, reiterate, the fees, they're not all across the board, all increases. There were a lot of decreases, so obviously, they went through this fee schedule very carefully with our staff, and are very conscientious about taxpayers' money. Thank you very much for ma, doing this. Okay, so, on to next public hearing open. I declared a public hearing open. Oh, no, that's, never mind. We are continuing number item seven, no existing business, so we're on to new business, item eight. What?
Good evening, Mayor, Members of the City Council. I'm Mackenzie Brady with Recreation, going to over, give you an overview of the skate park rules that we have proposed for your adoption today. Elaine? Wait, here we go. Thanks for coming. Just gonna go over the, the history of the skate park, how we got to where we are today, show you the site location and the original design, and show some photos of vandalism and damage, and orient you to the skate park user group, and give you the overview of the rules. So, the skate park was built in cooperation with the Peninsula Family YMCA of San Francisco in 2000, or opened in 2002. An operation was taken over by the City of Millbrae in 2007. Originally, the office that was on-site at the skate park housed a YMCA employee, and they took, I believe it was $5 entry fee for anybody to use a skate park. And so, operation was taken over by the city in 2007 to allow full access to the park. This is the location of the skate park. This is a track of Mills High, the track of Mills High School. And then, this is the Spur Trail. It's, the Spur Trail is between the skate park and Millbrae Avenue. It's, the spur trail is between the skate park and Millbrae Avenue. These are a lot of things that you can't read, but this was the original design of the skate park, the layout, and what was to be removed and added in. The skate park has ramps that are wooden and concrete, an office and bathroom, one bathroom, and a picnic area. These are some of the photos that show the vandalism and damage that has occurred at the skate park over the years. You can see graffiti. The ramps have been used heavily, so there's damage to the corners of them.
Quick question through the chair. Are these current photographs or these past photographs?
They're past photos.
Okay.
What's up with the chair?
Recent past photos.
But this is not the current condition of the skate park?
Correct. I think the chair was dumped.
Which is against the law in Millbrae.
Correct. So, those are some old photos. So, we knew that something needed to be done. So, Public Works took action and repaired, started to repair the skate park. The skate park was closed down in February in order to allow time for the maintenance and the repairs and the painting of the vandalism at the skate park. We formed a skate park user group in March to get feedback from current users, and the first meeting was in March, March 20th. And they, they gave us the feedback that the park needed to be reopened, which we knew, so we needed to do the maintenance for it. They gave suggestions on things that could be done to help get it open quicker. And so, Public Works got the park reopened on March 29th, which was right before spring break. And after spring break, on April 10th, we had a second skate park user meeting, and they gave us fantastic feedback and said that having a skate park open was just wonderful. At one point, there were 20 youth out there, and every time that I've driven by the skate park, just looks really, really great. The next meeting will be at the skate park on May 15th. And, May 15th at 6:00 p.m., if anybody would like to attend. And the skate park users have agreed to help pitch in on one Saturday a month to help clean up the park, the skate park, to sweep it up, to paint over any vandalism that's there, and just to help look out with other users. And so, we put together a list of skate park rules that we'd like you to consider for adoption, and this has already been approved by the skate park user group. They gave some feedback on it and were, were willing to move forward with these rules. So, I'll just read through them. That, "This is an unsupervised facility, and folks need to use it at their own risk." And we are, I'll paraphrase, "Instead of just having skateboards allowed, we're also allowing other skaters, people using bikes and scooters as well." But letting folks know that these do cause serious injury and that they are required to wear helmets, knee pads, and elbow pads. We actually have a municipal code and California Health and Safety Code that cite that these are requirements. We just wanted to make sure that those were posted. Also, noting that we don't assume any responsibility for damage or injuries. Again, only skateboard skates, bicycles, and scooters are allowed, so not allowed are all other wheeled devices. So, anything else that moves with wheels is not allowed unless it's one of those items. And users under the age of 12 must be accompanied by a guardian. We won't allow unsafe or reckless behavior, and municipal code cites that fighting graffiti, well, not fighting, but graffiti vandalism or any other aggressive or disruptive behavior is not permissible. And municipal code notes that noise needs to be kept to a minimum. And amplified sound, organized events, or sales of any kind are not allowed without prior written permission. We want users to use ramp elements in their intended way and not to allow any other obstacles or materials onsite. They also cannot bring glass or drink or eat on the skate surface. And animals, alcoholic beverages, tobacco, drugs, and drug paraphernalia are not permitted onsite. And not responsible for any lost or stolen items. And if there are any hazards that do exist, they are to let Recreation Department or Parks Division know, and any illegal activity can be reported to the sheriff's office. And based on our municipal code, the skate park is open from dawn to dusk or until 9:00 p.m. Just moving forward, we would recommend that you would approve these skate park rules. And if adopted, a sign will be placed onsite at the skate park, and the sheriff's office will be able to enforce these rules.
Do we have trash receptacles right outside the gate there?
Yes, a Big Belly was-
Ooh, we went all out, Big Belly, huh? Okay.
Move approval. Vice Mayor Holber.
And were there cameras installed as well?
Yes, there were. There, can you speak to that?
We recently installed two cameras at the skate park.
Okay, so there's full coverage of the whole park and perhaps the, I don't know if that was outside or inside where the chair was, was left there.
The old camera used to be hidden tucked in the corner, so we couldn't see activity behind the, at the corner of the bathroom. Now, we have two cameras. We should be able to zoom in and then have a clear view of the entire site.
Okay, very good, thank you.
One more? Can we please keep data as to how this progresses? Hopefully, your new member group will assist in this being a pleasant experience for everyone, but-
And the data.
If there are any incidents. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll keep a record of graffiti, illegal dumping, any nuisance-type events that occur. We're really monitoring it.
Is there sections for different ages?
No.
Nope. It's all, all for one and one for all?
Yes.
Do you have a follow-up, Vice Mayor? Holber, no? Okay. Okay, well, I have a second? All right, so also, I just want to thank staff for all your hard work, and I'm very impressed that you got a users group together. I think that was a brilliant idea. Is there any thought about getting rid of that, that building?
Well, we're taking a look at it to see if we can actually refurbish it and keep it open, because some of the suggestions from the user group were that not only will it provide for the skate park users, but also people that enjoy the spur trail can use it as a restroom facility. So, we're, we're still evaluating and monitoring that, and we'll, we'll bring that report back to the city council.
Okay.
We're looking at the cost benefit. We don't have a cost estimate to get the bathroom repaired and, and open.
There was, there was some discussion about using a key card system? Is that still on the table?
Yeah, so we looked at that. We, meeting with the user group, they felt that it would not be appropriate past skate parks. We've had a couple of skate shops, actually, that have used it, that have come out and given us a lot of good information. It just, people will vandalize it and, and break it, so they have found that it's really not worth going down that, that path. So, we're going to continue to monitor it. And so far, we've seen significant improvements. It's clean. I've seen more kids out there in the last couple of weeks than I have probably in the last, you know, seven or eight years.
Vice Mayor.
And if it is too costly to fix up the restroom, and if it's still, you know, a target potentially for vandalism, possibly another option could be a portable toilet there and, as a lower cost, lower risk type of option?
Yeah, exactly, council members. So, we're looking at all those options and looking at a cost benefit, and again, we'll report back to the council as to what our recommendation would be.
Thank you. Councilman Aliba. Votes, please.
Item number eight passed with a vote of four to zero with council member Schneider excused.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, everybody. So, we're at the end of our agenda. Council comments, so I'll start with Vice Mayor Holber.
Okay, we haven't had comments in a few meetings, so, I guess I can go back a little ways. Let's see, at the Caltrain Local Policymakers Group, we had another review of, well, not a review, but a meeting where we discussed the business plan and some of the options. There is, there are sort of three growth scenarios that are being considered, a baseline growth, moderate growth, and high growth. And obviously, with the higher growth, there would be more trains run, about 12 per hour, more off-peak service, more weekend service as well. The challenge is that it's more costly with more trains. There would need to be likely more grade separations as the gates would be down sometimes, maybe half the time over, over rush hour commute, maybe about 30 minutes out of an hour, the gates would be down. So, many of the busier intersections would have to be fully separated. There also wouldn't need to be four tracks in substantial sections of the Caltrain corridor. So, while I think many of the members of the, of the policymakers group would like to have more service to their cities, they're, you know, it's, it's not free. Certainly is a substantial cost to that. Let's see, the Parks and Recreation Commission did not have a quorum last week, but my understanding is that they did make some progress on the B-PAC Committee, Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. They've had some good involvement with some members of the public as well. And, let's see, the Peninsula Congestion Relief Alliance Board, Commute.org, met last week. We had a discussion about the, some of the shifts in transportation modes, bike share. As many know, Lime Bike has dropped their dockless bike program. They're now just Lime, and they're focusing more on scooters than on bikes. And my understanding was, we were close to finalizing an agreement with them to allow bike, dockless bikes here in Millbrae, but then they decided to suspend that part of their, their business and focus on scooters. So, I think Commute.org would be a good organization to help, you know, assess the trends in this form of transportation and help to coordinate among cities and throughout San Mateo County on, on policies and best practices. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Holber. So, bringing up the subject of scooters, I had some friends who rented one of those scooters and had a, hit a bump. So, is there any thought about having some sort of ordinance where they, we approve these scooter rentals pending their disclaimer for the city, so then the city's not liable for any accidents that occurs on a scooter, on city property?
So, Mr. Mayor, just, so if somebody outside of the city rents a scooter and they bring it into the city, do you mean? Or if we do business with it?
They're renting a Lime scooter, for instance, and they hit a rut in the sidewalks, and they sue the city for something.
So, any entity that comes to the city and wants to use our sidewalks or whatever public areas to, you know, to park, we would be sure to have an agreement that would protect the city against liability for claims or injuries, damages that could occur as a result of use of those bikes.
I just want to make sure that happens, because I know that, you know, that says a lawsuit waiting to happen.
Oh, I'm, yeah, I'm sure.
And they're not permitted on sidewalks.
That's right.
Or ordinance that says they're not permitted on sidewalks?
California vehicle law.
State law, right?
Correct.
Okay. Neither are bicycles, by the way. Very good. So, see people, bike rodeo, stay off sidewalks. And beta laws. And let's see, Councilman Pavan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Lions Club had their youth and government event, which was lovely, and a teacher of the year. Sorry that the rest of the council couldn't be there. Movie night was great in Central Park. We had two food trucks. Name of the movie was Christopher Robbins. Really, really nice, and the recreation sent, group, our recreation group brought out these frisbees that actually light up. So, it was a lot of fun, and free popcorn galore. Popcorn machine was working overtime. In addition to that, Rotary had their egg hunt, I guess it's called. They must have had over 300 people out at Central Park, which was a great, great event. Greatly appreciate that. I spent the day in Sacramento for the C-CAG, which is the County, City and County Association of Governments Leg Day. So, thank you to Assembly members Kevin Mullen and Phil Ting and Senator Jerry Hill, and representatives from the governor's office who sat down to talk to us about various legislation. It was a very productive day, sharing information. And the governor's real purpose in all this housing legislation is to really encourage jurisdictions like ours to kind of finish our, there was evidently funding to help us finish our general plan, increase our zoning, which we are already doing, our affordable housing elements. So, we are on track, as are all the 20 jurisdictions within San Mateo County are definitely on track for that. And we are, we in San Mateo County, the 20 cities, are really trying to emphasize, San Mateo County, close to 800,000 people, and we are not just the county between San Francisco and San Jose. So, we have the largest regional airport, the Intermodal Center, everything going here. So, that's the goal as the new Metropolitan Transportation Commissioner. We have a meeting tomorrow to discuss various elements of transportation throughout our county. So, we're really going to try to establish San Mateo County and each and every one of our cities and how we are all working together. We don't have a single mayor, but of the 101 cities and the nine Bay Area counties, we are 20. And we are significant, and we need to get that message out there. There's a reason that Facebook and Google and Visa and Genentech are all here, and the importance of this county will be clearly, clearly established along those lines. Also, we have been approached, I was at the chamber meeting, several hoteliers are interested in approaching the Urban Republic with their hotel development, which has been previously approved by this council. We would, I think, or hope the rest of the council would agree, that we hope the developer will be open to certain hoteliers. Hyatt was one. Some other ones are interested in what happens there. And we hope, can I get some consensus here, that this developer will be open to being approached by these individuals so that we can, as we've discussed, hopefully, get a high-quality development there. So, that's one aspect. In addition to that, talk tomorrow with the MTC is also the Bridge Authority. They'll be talking about the Richmond Bridge, which is having a lot of, lot of issues and what's happening there. And as a final note, I'm going to donate this book, F is for Feminism, to the Millbrae Library. It's A through Z on all kinds of different things, great photos. It's a local author who's also coming out with a book for boys as well. It's a wonderful book, so I hope people get an opportunity to look at this and go from there. And I think that that is, oh, are we going to report out sometime soon on our goal-setting?
Yes, we are.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Aliba.
Okay, well, the seniors were here, and that was a group that I love participating with. I wanted to note that, if you note the calendar in the front of the senior line, the print's very large, easy to read, and also, there's some bilingual language on it, and that was part of their goal that they've been working on. And I want to thank staff and everybody for putting this together, for them getting it forward. Going forward, HART is, has invited all of us to attend their fundraiser networking for May 2nd. It's at the Devil Canyons from 5:00 to 7:00 coming up.
Do you want to explain HART?
HART is the Housing Endowment and Regional Trust, and they actually help, help people get into home ownership, and they always do, they also do private and partnerships with building of houses. Recently, they're working with the City of Pacifica for teacher housing, and it was approved, I think, with a little, a little delay with that process, that program, but it's programs that allow for housing in a lot of different ways. Transparency, I am a Realtor, and I was able to put a teacher into a unit using the HART loan, down, down payment assistance, and she is living in San Bruno at a condo. So, it's kind of one of those housing networking events that- So, it's kind of one of those housing networking events that people come together and talk about how they're facilitating all different ways of homeownership. And the council has been invited to that. On May 9th, MCTV is having trivia night. Did everybody hear about that? I hope you could participate. It's kind of a fun night, and this will be their second year. It'll be at the Jacuti Room this year. Last year, it was at the restaurant, Sixteen Mile House. And then finally, I wanted to mention Sal, who we are sponsoring, are having their fundraiser on September 13th, and that's in Redwood City. And our city is a sponsor to our Sal, S-A-L, Sheriff's Activity League. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, as I mentioned, I just returned from Malta, and it was a very, it was a wonderful experience. The, I met the mayor, and he is a pretty young mayor. They have a council of 11, soon to be 13 people in their council. They have this way of doing, and they, apparently, their council meets in a conference room, basically. And, I mean, it's open to the public, but I guess not many people from the public attend. But I noticed they had a lot of computer screens around the, around the conference room. Maybe they get their comments through the computers. And then they gave us, the mayor commissioned a project of History of Malta, and this book, kind of like what we have in the history, but much bigger. And anyway, so he gave us the first copy off the press, non-released, and went for the library. So, that was very nice. We gave council members a commemorative plaque, and I thank staff for putting that together. It was a really nice piece. And it basically has the city's seal and a picture of the corner, the cornerstone, cornerstone that's up here in front of City Hall engraved on the plaque. So, it was a very nice piece. And basically, we were there over Good Friday celebrations at Molsta, and it's a big procession, a cast of 600 people or so, many of the people from the community, and it's all church-centric, and apparently, the Molsta Church has the third-largest dome in the world. Very interesting. And that dome, during World War II, there was a bomb that was, that went through the dome, and it landed in front of the altar and didn't explode. So, that was a pretty miraculous event in itself. And then on the day of Easter, or the day of, the day of the celebration of Christ being, arising from, they invited, they invited me to participate in their, with the van, not playing, but just processioning with the van. And so was the council, our Council General, Louis Vella. Louis, Vella, right? Vella, thank you. I'd like to thank Louis for his work, as he put together, he did a lot, a lot of work to make sure that this group got, got a good flavor of Malta. And I have to say, Malta is a very impressive place. I would encourage people to go there and visit. It's beautiful. There's lots of culture, and people are very nice, and the food's good, and it's very reasonable. I was very surprised. I got two, I got a large cappuccino for two euros, so I think you should all consider going down there. It's a little hard to get to, because there's not many flights in and out, but I think it might, it'd be worth it for you to go. It's seaside, it's surrounded by ocean, so definitely many opportunities to be in the water. And when I was, so at the last Associate Beer Governments, where I sit on the Executive Board, the, we did talk about CASA, but it was a very short discussion, and pretty much it was just people were just, the directors are very upset about the fact that the, that we were told that, that we would have a say in the CASA compact, and it's not a done deal. It's turning out to be a done deal, so we just kind of...
Can I?
Yes, please.
Part of the reason I was appointed to the Metropolitan Transportation Committee was the, MTC, as they call it, its vote on CASA. So, I'm coming in after the fact, and even the Metropolitan Transportation Committee Board did not intend for a free snowball ride to enact all the legislation that was attached to this, what's called the CASA compact. And the legislators are now dealing with that. So are the commissioners from MTC dealing with that. So, the idea was try to encourage housing and affordable housing throughout the region. We were not represented. San Mateo County was not represented in the process that it went through, and that's been a lot of the flashback from what was initiated. And then after it passed, a small group of unelected people tried to enact legislatively all the aspects of the compact, as it were. So, we are dealing, part of the problem, part of the reason to go to Sacramento today was to help our jurisdictions do what we're trying to do, which is increasing our zoning, our zoning for housing and that kind of thing, and not be penalized for all the good work that's being done right now within our region, San Mateo County, the close to 800,000 people that live here, and all the businesses, and the largest regional airport. We're going to make this work, and it seemed like the governor's staff was going to work with us along those lines.
So, just again, the CASA compact was, was an ad hoc committee that was put together by MCT, MTC and ABAG for a purpose of addressing the housing crisis. And the people who represented the, this compact were mostly supportive developers. If you look at the list of people who are on the compact board, advisory board, are mostly developers and housing advocates and tech companies. So, basically, everybody who, who would gain from, from having government take responsibility and not them taking any responsibility, as I swear, I had a hard time with it, because they're just throwing a difficult situation on the backs of the taxpayers and not taking any, and the people who are creating the housing crisis weren't taking any responsibility, and also created an atmosphere where the developers could develop without any regulatory requirements or even being overseen by anybody who was elected. So, they were not answerable to anybody. So, that was a big problem, and that the mayors all met with Senator Hill a month ago. And the theme was, one thing is that San Mateo County is doing their share of building houses. We are working hard, and this city, with the leadership of our city manager, Tom Williams, are going to put together a video showing that we do and what we've been doing and what our success has been, because city, we are not sitting on our hands. And Millbrae is, is going to be building 3,200 units in the next five years or so, even though they say we're below arena numbers. We're going to far exceed arena numbers. So, it's, it's not even going to be a question of that, and other cities are following suit. So, it's not that we're not building, and we're not making it, we're not giving the priority. We are, but we want to do it, that's, that's also, has some consideration for the impact on our community. You know, traffic, parking, safety, all those issues should be addressed, and they shouldn't be sidelined it just because there's a housing crisis. And I'm thinking that developers are taking advantage of us by saying, oh, this is a crisis, you got to let us do what we can to build houses, we can do whatever we want. And that is, that is great that they want to do that. But the other, I have a problem, too, is that they're building mostly market-rate housing and not much affordable housing. So, whose, whose pockets being lined here? That's one of my questions. Who's most being benefited?
Well, in certain aspects of the compact have already been voted on by the voters. One was rent control. City of San Francisco has approved 70,000 new housing units, none of which are affordable. Yet, their legislators are passing legislation that will remove local control to the jurisdictions throughout the state. So, there are a lot of issues there, but as the mayor pointed out, our point is that we are really doing everything we can to keep the balance of jobs and housing together. And it's only been in the last seven years within our region that this has become an issue. We've had, again, Googles come here, Facebooks, all these big corporations, and I think a lot of the jurisdictions will be looking for assistance from those corporations to help us even the balance out. And also, as a smaller jurisdiction, we have to be concerned about our infrastructure needs and demands on that whenever big changes like this happen. So, we're working on it, and we will continue to do so.
Great. So, wishing my fellow travelers from Malta safe trip home. And is there anything else?
I want to close in memory of the deaths on Easter.
Yes, that's a good point. I'd like to close the meeting on the...
Terrorists.
The shameful attacks on innocent people, unarmed people at the, in Sri Lanka. Did you want to say something? No? Okay, thank you. Good night.